The time is now 8:10 PM. Council will please come to order for its special work session. Welcome and thanks to all of you who have taken time from your evenings to be with us for this special work session. And just a reminder, if you have a cellphone, would you please either turn it off or set it to vibrate? For the audio record being made today, I would like to note that the following council members are present. Ms. Bolton, Mr. Bonato, Mr. Matei, Ms. Miles, Mr. Shu, Ms. Velazquez, and Chairperson Baca Gonzalez. The first item on our agenda is petitions or communications, oral or written. And we have two individuals who've signed up to address us on the topic that was posted. The first individual is Amber Barala, and then we'll have Mr. Eric Eens. I got your name correct this time. And just as a reminder, for the petitions and communications, we allow three minutes, just so you kind of have a little ballpark in your mind's eye. And Ms. Barala, when you're ready, you may come forward, and we won't start counting the time for you until you get underway.
Okay, hello everyone. So last time, I know we didn't get a lot of time to talk about this, but I just wanted to know there are some of you that are opposed to it. And I just wanted to discuss some of the things, like the cons that you have in mind.
Actually, the opportunity for petitions is for you to share your information with us.
Okay, well, I can do that too.
Yeah, and then, but be mindful that anything we would do, at some point in time, we would have a public hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, at that point, there would be a longer period for comments.
Okay, well, some of the things that I did last week was I went around and I was talking to business owners. And I was just asking them what they thought about retail marijuana coming into their area. And I actually collected around fifteen business owners that I had talked to. And probably eighty-six percent was for it, and so fourteen percent said no. And another thing that I also did was I also talked to a policeman, or a police official that just wants to be nameless and this. And then I also talked to probation officer Tom Gonzalez. And they, the feedback that they gave me was they see no increase on, no increase on, I'm sorry, a second. They see no increase on a result as like underage possession for them to get a hold of it, so they didn't see any increase on, on, I'm sorry. My mind went blank for a second, but they just didn't see any increase on people as like the youth getting a hold of it, if we were to implement the retail marijuana. So, and another thing that I wanted to discuss was, I have a couple of friends of mine, and they are Tom Carter and Lyndy Carter, and they have two children. And so, one of the things that I discussed with them is I asked them, what did they think about the children getting a hold of it, as far as on the black market? She had told me that she thinks that retail marijuana would be a good way to regulate it, especially for people twenty-one, twenty-one and older to get it. So she thought that, I mean, basically, they just didn't want to see their children growing up getting it on the streets. So she just thinks it would help regulate marijuana and a decrease in black market. And so, I guess one last thing that I would like to add is just, as city council, like, what would you, like, what would you be losing if you said yes to retail marijuana? And I think, as far as what you wouldn't be losing is, the regulated system will keep marijuana off the streets and put it out of the hands of our youth. So if we implemented retail marijuana, then we could just regulate all of that. And I think that's it, as far as what I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barala.
Thank you.
And Mr. Eens?
Sorry for my appearance again.
Oh, no, you're, we're glad to have you come and address us.
It's been around five weeks of period of alcohol, so covered in hydraulic fluid, and I apologize for that. Last week, I feel like we kind of got some opposition on the recreational marijuana movement and progression. And I feel that some of those feelings of, from those of you that are opposed to it, can be personal opinions. And I would just like to state, just a small fact, several of these are just facts. Denver Mayor Michael Hancock, actually, personally disagrees with Amendment sixty-four. But wanted to make sure not to have a knee-jerk reaction centered on personal beliefs and uphold the will of the people. And I believe as city official, I think you all are elected to do so as well, which kind of moves me to talk on about your oath to uphold the state and US Constitution. US Constitution, I believe, as we had covered last week, contains no federal substance abuse act whatsoever, which actually, marijuana is actually a schedule one, meaning a high, excuse me, a high risk for abuse, and no medical purposes whatsoever. And it's actually been proved, and the US government actually now holds the patent that marijuana does in fact have medical purposes, so I'd like you to take that into Recent federal study shows marijuana use by Colorado high schoolers has dropped nine percent since the implementation of medical marijuana regulations in 2009. I'd like to reconsider that as well. Marijuana dependency rate, eight to ten percent. Alcohol dependency rates are fifteen percent. This is addictions of those that partake in those drugs. Cocaine and heroin, twenty-five percent. Tobacco is thirty percent. Eighty thousand people a year die from alcohol abuse, over fourteen hundred alone in Colorado. And there has not been one single marijuana-related death recorded in its history. Other than that, I think we have a huge opportunity here to increase our safety and well-being of our community. And at the same time, we would limit teen access and secure revenue that would otherwise be funded to black market street sales. And, you know, it is a regulated system, it takes the drugs off the streets and away from our youth. And regardless of how you vote, I want to be honest with you, this is going to happen either way. It is already happening right now, there are already black market drug dealers that go up to Pueblo and bring it back here and sell it tax-free. It's already happening, and it will continue to happen. And the question for you guys is, what can we do to stop this? And take these drugs off our streets and earn some income from it, and do positive things? Amber's business model is projecting around half a million dollars minimum for meaningful tax rates. So that gives you kind of a general estimate of what you're kind of looking at there. Other than that... I think people have spoken, fifty-two percent, and I think you city officials should uphold the will of the people. That is all.
Thank you. The next agenda item is discussion regarding retail and medical marijuana, and I believe, Mr. Aker, you are going to lead off the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I just wanted to start off by answering at least one question that was asked, as far as trying to find out what some other communities in the southern parts of the state are doing. Cokedale has adopted a prohibition. I did talk with, via email with Alamosa Lamar, and then spoke with Rick Klein over in La Hanta. Tried to get in contact with my counterpart in Fowler. We weren't able to connect today, but Alamosa has prohibited it, Lamar is prohibiting it, and La Hanta is prohibiting it. So that gives a kind of a sampling of what's going on in this part of, part of the state and the southern part. I do want to, I just wanted to start the discussion with there are options that are available to city council. You can outright ban it, you could approve it, we could enter into a moratorium for ninety to a hundred and eighty days, centennial, we could do a moratorium for a year. I think we could do a, one of the burning questions now in action is, does the city want to be named as the licensing authority if it should be allowable? Mr. Downs and I discussed, we think there's a way that you could go ahead and tell the state that if we should choose to now or in a future date, allow recreational marijuana, that the city would want to be the licensing authority and be the ones notified if there should be, we could appoint, if it's Ms. Garrett or Mr. Downs or myself, you know, our offices as far as who should be notified if someone does apply for a medical or a retail marijuana license. So I think there are some options as you're going through your deliberations on what we should do as far as, you know, do we outright ban it, or do we add some more time, and I think that's where a moratorium comes into place. We did provide several examples of both ordinances abandoned, but then also put some regulation on home grow operations. There's also examples of agencies that have adopted it and put some conditions on it. Some of the ones that have banned it, they've actually gone into pretty much detail of banning not only the sale, but any of the other uses as well. So I think there's a lot that we can put together, however city council's desire should be, and try to get something, we could get something in place for discussion at the next work session, as far as something actually different. I don't know if Mr. Downs has got anything to add.
I do indeed. May I, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. I didn't mean to go before I was working.
Oh, no, no, if I didn't interrupt, I just wanted to thank you Les for all the very professional material that you presented, because of course, the last six weeks in both topics, you've been very helpful.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilwoman Miles. Really, it's so much to say, and I wanted, I'm going to try to be brief with my introductory remarks to all of you, but I want to say, first of all, this is very exciting, because I think part of what you're going to be doing tonight, even though this is a special work session, is kind of giving us your position, where you stand and where you want us to go forward, and how you want us to go forward, I should say. So we're finally going to kind of know if it's a majority in favor, or a majority against, and that in and of itself is going to be, you know, kind of a real sense of relief, I think, for a number of our staff members. A couple of things I want to say, in response to the pressure that you guys must be feeling. First of all, you know that Amendment sixty-four did pass in Los Angeles County. It passed locally. You get it, you have all mentioned it repeatedly. Well, I just want to emphasize the point that this is a republic, not a direct democracy, which means you're elected because people trusted you. They know you, they know your experience. A lot of you are from here, you know, have lived here your entire lives. A lot of you, you know, maybe were born here, moved away, and then came back. For whatever reason, all of you have been elected, and you've been trusted to take on issues such as this. So you're not obligated, you're not compelled to automatically carry out what a will of the majority of the people and the voters in this community say. That having been said, and I just want to say, that with that being borne in your minds, you can easily vote no, and you can vote no with a clear conscience. You can say whatever you want to about reasons why you may not want to support Amendment sixty-four and everything that it implies. The flip side of it clearly is that it is a huge opportunity. And as Tom was saying, it really is a remarkable concept when you think about it. Now, point number one is, the feds are really not wanting people to engage in, or I should say, communities to engage in interstate commerce if they're going to allow retail marijuana. It's verboten. You're not supposed to be considering where you are, how they're going to be doing things. People can come here from Madison to buy marijuana. However, our geographical location means that Trinidad potential, if you went forward with this, is a remarkable hub for this kind of, this kind of sale and this kind of product. You would have people from, potentially, coming to Trinidad from New Mexico, Oklahoma, Texas, Kansas, all over the places, is Tom was talking about. It does look like, if you look at the eastern border of Colorado, that none of those communities are likely to allow retail marijuana. They tend to be very conservative ranching communities, not likely to authorize it. Then if you go along the southern border to our east, none of those communities, you know, certainly, Backey County, none of those communities are likely to authorize it either. Same thing if you go from where we are to our west, there are really no other communities out there, and there's no access coming up. So it's a huge business opportunity. There are very, very large, you know, arguments, both pro and con. What I want to say is, and this is to conclude my remarks to you in terms of the introduction of this discussion, and that is, if you say no, it's kind of game over, at least for now. And it's done, and we can all move on. If you say yes in one fashion or another, then you can leave it to us to worry about the details. Everything that needs to be fleshed out, everything that needs to be considered, we can bring to you in piecemeal fashion. Tom's absolutely right, and a lot of communities are doing this, and that is imposing a moratorium for a greater time period and give you more time to think about it. You can also defer to a, you know, to a new council that's going to be coming in, in some kind of, you know, different form. We have, you know, term limits, whoever may stand for reelection, but there are a lot of different options. But you can do whatever you want. My point in saying that is, I don't want you to be bogged down with the details. You don't need to be. Because, as I was saying to council persons Matei Shu and Bolton during the break, Denver right now, they're making the news every day. And the Denver City Council is taking on the whole idea of conversion. They have over four hundred facilities, medical marijuana facilities in the Denver area. I was telling them that they outnumber Starbucks in the Denver metro area, they have so many medical marijuana facilities. And so every day, they're putting over these thirty-nine points about what they need to consider, simply in terms of conversion from medical to retail marijuana facilities. So it's a lot for you to think about. You heard Ms. Allen, we could go, really, the big thing is, is you want to go forward with it, or if you do not. And of course, we are here to honor that decision and to, if you decide that you want to do it, to move you forward and allow you to do that, if that's what the majority council wants to do.
Well, I would like to open up the floor for a discussion, and Ms. Miles?
Yeah, as you can probably tell other council members from last meeting, I'm very open-minded to the idea of medical marijuana, perhaps more than retail marijuana. How's it with the take? One of the points that you raised is it's a matter of personal consciousness, and you were afraid that things would sort of slip into this underworld if we allowed, let's say, open the door, let a camel under the, under the camel's nose, under the pen. Yeah, I thought a lot about it, and to be honest with you, the term is flawless, and it's really corresponding with prohibition. I mean, if you go back to the, you know, nineteen twenties, just watch an episode of Lord Law &amp; Empire on HBO, talk about the inability to enforce any sort of sense of regulation of societal good. It just ran rampant, murders, I mean, this complete lack of control, complete lack of taxation. When you've got a non-tax product with a high demand, crime will rush in, and you've seen it, and it's here. I mean, you can, you can buy black market marijuana pretty easily, anywhere in Colorado, anywhere in the corridor that Les was talking about. I just am a strong believer, just like in the model of alcohol, you're going to have a lot less abuse when you regulate it and you tax it. And you'll have people complying with IDs and stings and all sorts of ways that you will not have access to regulate it and impose some sense of social welfare in the black market. I want to make a further point, which is, I've spoken with several friends, they've confirmed, and I have some friends that have medical marijuana, and, you know, with very legitimate, one has rheumatoid arthritis, the other one has had twelve operations on her knees, and, you know, they drive up to Pueblo. And I said, "Do you ever buy black market?" "No." It just doesn't make any sense to me, because it's cheaper and it's better in Pueblo. And the medical marijuana, anything that could possibly be available on the black market. And if you look at the history of what's going on in the communities that have gone for medical marijuana, you see the price just drop precipitously. And what I've heard, the quality go up. And it's, it just becomes a model where the black market gets forced out. You don't have economies of scale, which is what medical marijuana facilities have. And if you don't have open and transparent advertising, which the most competitiveness, which is probably equally as important as economies of scale, you're just not going to be able to compete on a price basis. Combination of those, you look in the altern, I was picking up a friend at the airport in Springs, and I picked up this alternative newspaper, and I was flipping through, her plane was late, and I was just looking at all the ads and splash he has, you know, a hundred and twenty-five dollars an ounce, or whatever. Competition is good, economies of scale are good, and I'll just conclude by saying, I think the government's ability to control and tax is good as regards marijuana. So, anyway, that's my two cents.
Any other comments? Ms. Bolton?
I agree with Ms. Miles' comments, and believe that we should approve both the medical and retail aspects of the sale of marijuana. We should take advantage of the actions of some of our surrounding cities who have decided to ban, and reap some profit from this for our town. We need an economic driver. The regulation ensures the purity of the product, rather than people buying off the street and buying a product that who knows what it is possibly laced with, which is a very good thing to know, that it's a pure product. And I would, I would hate to see us not take advantage of this. I spent a week in Denver recently, and, no, I didn't observe the entire four hundred marijuana facilities, however, I saw a multitude of them. But surrounding them were all kinds of capital improvements going on, there's building going on, there's expansion going on. We need that.
Mr. Matei? Do you? I agree with that. Yeah, well, the last time we had the opportunity to meet and discuss this, I commented that we were perhaps sitting on a goldmine, or we could be at the top of a very slippery slope, okay? And I understand the comments that both of you make, and recognize that. I'd like to qualify the remarks that I'm about to make by saying that I voted in support of legalizing marijuana, as did my wife and some of my, both my children who vote. So I guess at that time, my mindset was, it's probably a thing, like you had mentioned, it's the 21st century, and we need to seize the moment, as it were, cop a day. That having been said, though, and with all well intentions to regulate things and make it positive and all the good that comes with it, the ugly underbelly of marijuana, drugs, and alcohol for that matter, I can't divorce myself from my personal experiences, okay? You make an interesting observation, and I believe I struggle to represent the will of the people, the fifty-two percent who voted in favor of it. But there are also forty-five percent who voted against it, and I have to recognize that. It's not like ninety-seven to three percent, it's not that overwhelming, we're pretty close there, within fifty percent, yes or no. And again, it's my personal experiences. Alcohol's a regulated substance, but in the course of my time spent in law enforcement, particularly in highly controlled, I saw the negative side of alcohol. I saw a lot of ugly things, and I don't want to do it again. You mentioned earlier in your comments, and just because you're there, you made a comment about that there are no deaths attributable to marijuana. But yet statistics show that, well, traffic fatalities decreased by twelve percent. Those that involved a person influenced by marijuana, whether he was a deceased person or not, increased by a hundred and fourteen percent. So to beg you differently for statistics, somebody had to die, or we wouldn't have a hundred and fourteen percent increase in traffic situations that involve a fatality.
I'm sorry, I was more or less just referring to alcoholism, abuse, overdoses.
Okay, and I don't mean to engage you in an argument here, okay?
No, no, that's fine.
I am, I am willing to, and what I'd like to do is maybe have a public hearing. All the conversations that we have had have been from people who support it. We had the two gentlemen, those brothers and...
Yes.
...that made their presentation. You folks have been here a couple of times.
I believe the last one was...
And maybe if we had a public hearing for someone to present the other side of the coin, so to speak. I recall several years ago, I lived here my whole life, I recall several years ago when there was the whole idea about having gaming in Trinidad, and that's why a lot of our buildings got bought to do the things they're doing when they sit in a state of disrepair, is because gaming didn't come here. I just had a real problem, having my junior high kids at that time having to walk through gaming to get to school. And I showed how they want to go to church in the middle of a casino area. And they just, they just didn't reply to the face of my personal morality, okay? And I'm trying to recognize that I have an obligation and my oath and all that kind of stuff. As a law enforcement officer, I realize the constitution of the federal government does not include marijuana, but the laws, the laws do. And I have to reconcile in my own mind and to my own conscience, how that is going to fall into place with what we're trying to do here, and how it is incongruent with the mandates of the federal government. I'm looking through this list of who has moratoriums, who has prohibited it, and who has approved it. And while I think I have a responsibility and an obligation as an elected council person to stimulate the economy of Trinidad, I also have an obligation as an elected official to preserve the quality of life for those who choose to be here. That's not to say that, I guess what I'm saying is, I am skeptic enough to see the bad things that can come with it, okay? And I'm trying to temper that with some reason. You make very good arguments, very convincing arguments. You talk about being in Denver. I have a daughter that lives in the Highland area, and within ten blocks of any direction of her house, or four medical marijuana dispensaries now, and as I drive up there, and I see the persons who are ill with their card in hand, they're presumed, I'm thinking, aren't they concerned for her safety? Just making the visual assessments that I make as a police officer of thirty-nine years, thirty-six years, it causes me to have some concern. In fact, when she was thinking about moving, I said, geez, but, Ben said, Denver PD won't even go up there. You know, just because that's what I see when I drive to her house at night, and it scares the hell out of me.
My question? Another? Yes, Ms. Velazquez.
I know.
No.
My question is, is it really going to make the black market go away? I don't think so. I don't think so. I mean, you said yes, you had a good argument there, I have to agree. But in my mind, I'm saying, no. No. Well, I mean, you know, we talked a lot about Denver, that's the big city. This is Trinidad. We've never had a, no medical marijuana here or anything. We put a moratorium on it. And I just wondered, is it going to make the black market go away? Because I drive home, there's houses there where people are stopping. You know what I'm saying? Is that little guy going to go away? I don't think so.
Well, I just wondered if we'll make less money.
Well, you know, is it going to help you, honey?
Will it shift, I'm just thinking it might shift part of the...
That I don't know. That I can't answer you. Is that going to help the economy here in Trinidad? I don't know.
Well, if, if, if you happen to buy things and it has forty-five percent taxes on it, as compared to none?
Yeah, seven.
It's like buying generic cigarettes or Marlboros.
The price, the price has come down precipitously.
I'm sure it has.
Where it's worth spending a tank of gas to drive to Pueblo, if you drive a car.
And you need to consider the factor of the purity that results in the regulation. I understand that. There will always be... There will always be those who don't care about that, but a great number of people will.
But, you know, we will have to make some, sorry to barge on you, we have to make some adjustments for, to enforce the regulations that come in. I look at my brother in blue back there, and, you know, we're going to have to have a lot more, you know, in order to make sure that the rules that we are going to impose are complacent.
Exactly.
And that may not be true. And most, from my experience, a lot of the people who use marijuana and other drugs here to forth, illegal, okay? In this arena, at least from my personal experience, and this is purely my opinion, they're not using the money they get from their job to buy it. They're using the money they get from burglaries and that kind of stuff in order to be able to fund this, which is going to make bigger work for the cops. I think.
I think you should take care of that.
We're all entitled to an opinion, and that's my opinion.
I've been arguing that alcohol is more expensive than marijuana to get to, I mean, people spend a lot of money on alcohol, and probably alcohol is going to cost for a customer two of marijuana, which is all it takes for this, you know, modern purity. And Lyd, I just want to address your, your comment about the black market not going away. Probably won't go away, probably some people still have spills, but there used to be a lot of spills. And prohibition, but what happened? Those people went out of business, it didn't make sense for them to do it anymore, make room for, you know, people producing on scale and with quality, with controlled quality. The spills didn't compete, you know, after we repealed prohibition, the spills didn't keep competing with the Diageos and the big alcohol manufacturers. I just think there's more evidence that, in my mind, that that market will diminish, and that it will be a very, very substantial legal market, which will be taxed and controlled and regulated. And I don't think anyone here wants to go back to the days of, you know, just because alcohol causes deaths, nobody would propose making it illegal. We have an opportunity here, it's legal in the state of Colorado, we have an opportunity to embrace that rather than resist it. I mean, imagine the scenario where, you know, certain counties got to stay dry or whatever after, after prohibition. But, boy, they have left in the dust, I mean.
You know, Michelle, I would love to have a public hearing, and I'm not against you, I'm not there yet. I mean, I'm already persuaded. But I'd like to see a public hearing, and I'd like to see some people that are against, I'd like to see what they have to say. We've only heard from the two of you. We have not heard from anybody else.
I remember reading a paper that the council provided me earlier, it's a Sunday's Publica Chief, and they talk about the hemp fest in Washington, they say that, they had 85,000 people, that's a lot of consumer, that's a lot of tax base. If nothing else, if you sold a bag of Doritos to every one of those people.
Yeah.
You know, cheese happens, right? Cook like a fucking 85,000 bags of Doritos.
Yes, Mr. Banano, I'm sorry. That's going to end up on this thing.
I'm sure will, but.
I do have a lot of concerns with legalizing marijuana. I hear what Anthony and Councilman McKay is saying. My beliefs are sort of like what he has in mind, being a native in Trinidad, we look at how they voted, and how the county voted, and we're looking at such a close election of how people wanted it and don't want it. To me, to put a moratorium on it, I think would just be wasting council's time. I think we have to go directly to the point and get this established as fast as we can. Maybe at the next meeting, or whatever Lyd was talking about, and get a good input from our public, and see who's against it, who is for it, and then put it on the agenda and make that decision. I think we should sit here till half freezes over, pardon my language, and keep putting moratoriums, 180 these over here, and then we'll wait for the next council, whoever comes into this council, pardon my Italian, talk with my hands. But I think Councilman McKay has a lot of good ideas. I mean, the gentleman on his face, well, he saw a lot in his lifetime, not only with alcohol, but with marijuana and whatever he's seen. And with my grandchildren growing up and stuff like that, I really have to say that I'd like to hear Lyd bit more on this, but putting a moratorium on this, I think this council would be making a mistake. I think we ought to move forward and move forward as fast as we can.
How can we incorporate a public hearing in the process of what we're trying to do?
A couple of, couple of ways. As you would consider an ordinance, either for or against, in a regular meeting, there's a public hearing component to that during the second meeting. Another way that we could do it, and I was just talking to the city attorney about it, if you wanted to hear soon, we could, we could have, let's say, next week's work session, be a public meeting to get public input, and invite the public to come and address city council, much like a public hearing, to get some additional input at that time. And then we could, after that period of public input, or before it, depending on which way council would like to move, we could have sample ordinances ready just specific to Trinidad for you to consider officially at the next regular meeting, which will be September 3rd. So, I think there's a couple of different ways to get that public input that I think that I'm hearing you desire to have.
I think that if we're going to go that second round, where the work session, it probably would be appropriate to have that, so that those
Yes, yes.
Those who will have an opportunity to attend.
And we could definitely, we could definitely do that. Because, and you could, because you would still have an official public hearing, and you actually consider the ordinances for formal action.
Earlier was presented that 15 business owners were questioned or interviewed, and of those, 86% indicated they would support it, and 14%. That's just really surprising. But I don't push you to work, I don't, that's a bit.
They said they would just love to see more people in their stores, and that it could help them, you know, with their business.
Okay.
And this was downtown, too.
Okay. Thank you.
I see a shoe.
Sorry to interrupt.
Let me give an opportunity for Mr. You don't want to weigh in?
I'm not running for election, and I think it's only fair that I vote, I'm dead against it, but I don't want to vote for it. One way or another, whoever takes my seat, then I think it should be fair enough to them to make the decision. It would be unfair for me to make a decision for someone else.
Any other comments?
I'm a woman of few words. And I was born and raised in this town, I saw good times, I saw bad times, I saw, I mean, I had to make my career out of the city of Trinidad because there were no jobs here for me or for my spouse. But I also love this town, and, I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. I just cannot see subjecting my hometown to an economic engine that is propelled by a controlled substance. So, I have to tell you that as far as my position is not only no, but hell no. That's just it.
Any other comments?
Are you okay?
Yes, yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I could, please, along the lines of what Mr. Greco was suggesting, and that is at the work session, if that's what you decide to do for next week, we can do a number of proposed ordinances, and one of the things is, it could be a yes or no vote, sounds like from what you have said, it would probably be a no vote. We could also do, you know, I have heard you, certainly, all of you, but if you were to consider a moratorium, then, like a moratorium, and I understand, Councilman, but I'm not trying to say anything counter to what you have just said, we just want you to have all of your options available at that. So, I guess probably three proposed things, even though it sounds clear what direction council is headed, and if that's agreeable, and if that makes sense, we can.
I realize that it's an unnecessary delay, as you presented, what I understood you presented earlier to have a moratorium. Quite honestly, I look for a little bit more concrete direction for the Department of Revenue, and I think they're floundering about as much as we are. Nobody knows what the hell to do with it, because it's so new and foreign and inconsistent with the national law. And again, it's, we're right there on the precipice of doing something great economically, but at what cost? You know? It's a value judgment that I think we have to make for ourselves and those we represent, and in order, in my mind, to better understand the will of the people that I represent, I would like to have the hearing.
To have the hearing, I agree, you could have the hearing, yes. But as far as putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, Anthony would, just like beating a red horse, I would, you know, put him in the barn, close it out.
Well, Councilman McKay, if I could, please, the Department of Revenue is just absolutely so overwhelmed right now. They really are. And I'd love to be able to get someone down here from that organization, and I just, they're doing all they can to tread water and get the regulations finalized by October 1. It sounds like
Not like Moses is going up on
Do it, it's not going to happen.
Ms. Miles?
Can I ask, I'd like to ask a question, I don't know if other council members care to answer it, but do you feel differently about retail marijuana than medical marijuana? I mean, one possible course of action is, you feel maybe there's more
You know, Michelle, with my back injury, my severe back injury, I could get medical marijuana. Down in my mind, I don't want, I don't need it, I'll get by, and I have to, it might be messed up, but, you know, as far as getting any medical marijuana, I don't, I don't need marijuana.
Yeah, I didn't mean to ask a personal question, I just meant whether you felt differently for the city. Is that a way of, and I'm just asking the question because people are very opinionated on this, and I just wanted to know if it made any difference to whether it was retail or wild west versus medical, a little more proven, it might be a way of getting experience, but it's, I'm throwing that out there just to see if that
I think that's a fair question, because in my mind, medical marijuana purports, in my mind, a greater degree of purity and innocence about it, and we have a medicinal purpose, a remedy, remedial reason why we're doing this, okay? There is no, you know, recreational Vicodin, but that's what it becomes. You understand, Vicodin too is also so that people avoid injuries and that kind of stuff, but
Marijuana is more effective.
True, but it does become that, you know, and that's that slippery slope about which I speak. And you read studies, and it talks about, you know, it calms people, and then people get mellow, and we do all the things, and all this kind of stuff. But on the other hand, I've also read studies that talk about we're creating a generation of people who can't remember a damn thing.
Where are we running a generation of addicted topies?
Well, true. And, you know, I just, in my mind
Very serious.
You know, and on the other hand, I bounce back and forth, I guess you figured that out, you know, I'm not Indian, nor Native American, but I understand it was a ritual kind of thing, and, you know, I had a sacred place in their culture, as I understand.
I would really like to have a hearing, I really would.
There are a lot of people who have, better explain my opinion, I think.
May I?
Please.
While I've already stated that I support both the medical and the retail aspect, in reality, since we set an ordinance in place that bans medical marijuana, don't we have to address that issue before we could ever get to retail marijuana?
That's easy, as I understand it, Vicky, you can correct me, but that's the easiest path to get to retail, but you can bypass medical and go right to retail, but that seems to be fraught with problems and doesn't, maybe
And that is much newer.
It is, but you would have until October 1st of next year before the application process would begin. Everything up until, up until then is the conversion process. So, while an existing medical marijuana facility right now can begin the conversion process and start doing that, a new, brand-new retail marijuana facility cannot be in business or really even apply until, excuse me, until July of next year. July taking applications, October beginning issuing, so.
There are huge costs, two different costs, right?
There are, there are massive costs. That's right. And I'm not trying to, you know, prattle on, but I want to say too, the state is, the state is in charge at least initially. And I know I've said this before, but unlike liquor licensing, which begins with us, it would start, an application for retail marijuana would start with the state. And then if they were inclined, I mean, they would first look to see if that locality had in place, you know, retail marijuana, they were going to do that. And then it would filter down. But we, you would be getting, we would be getting our direction from a state. But anyway, you would have a lot more time if that was the direction you were heading, was retail only. And there is an ordinance prohibiting medical marijuana, that's absolutely correct, whereas there's a temporary moratorium on retail.
Mr. Aker, to answer Ms. Bolton's question, I believe the current ordinance on the city's books, they, I don't think it spells out medical marijuana, it just says, the city won't issue a license for anything that violates state or federal laws. So, we have to repeal that, or just take a vote of the council to do that.
Right, there is a medical marijuana, and it's in your materials on medical marijuana, the local ordinance. It does. Ms. Garrett is kind of mouthing, there are two separate ordinances, but one of them does specifically preclude, you know, more on medical marijuana. Again, that is in the materials.
Given the limitations on interstate transportation and all that kind of stuff, does the fact that we are under periphery as you are, is Castle Rock, create any additional issues for us?
I don't think it does, because it doesn't make a consideration of marijuana any more or less meritorious, we are where we are. That's right. The feds have just said in conversations they've had with state officials that they're going to be looking for that. And of course, it is required that people who purchase would have a Colorado ID, either driver's license or, or the form of picture ID. You have to show that you are a Colorado resident if you're going to buy retail marijuana.
You can buy from out of state, if I remember correctly, but limited quantities.
I, you know, I was having that conversation earlier. I think it's going, they are wanting people from out of state to not buy, is my understanding. And they're really, especially the feds, are seeking to keep marijuana from being introduced into interstate commerce.
Mr. Aker, from the discussion that has occurred to this point, do you feel you have some idea about the direction to go? I want you to know, I'm not opposed to a public hearing, you know, I'm just one vote on this council.
I, if council's desire, my sense is that we should probably have next week's work session, move it to the evening, open it up as public input on the marijuana, I'm going to call it issue. And we will, as part of that, I've talked to Mr. Downs about preparing some optional draft different ordinances, at least for everyone to consider as well, to, you know, give you, if, depending on how you would like to go after you got that public input, that would give us further direction for a regular meeting on September 3rd, remembering that there will be ample opportunity with our regular meeting schedule for, at the second meeting, to have another public hearing on whatever ordinance council should desire.
Would this be in addition to regular work session business, or instead of?
I think it would be instead of, I think it's a
Is there anything Is there anything in regular business to...
Not that, not that we can't move to another shift.
Okay, and I, hold my comments at least, one final comment. The whole issue of taxation for marijuana and the proponents are suggesting, well, we'll use that to fund public education. But honestly, I think that's a bunch of bull. We ought to fund, we as a society ought to fund education because it's the proper thing to do and not because we're trying to sell, sell marijuana, okay? We should, money goes to education because that's what we got to do, not because they're trying to use it. I'm done.
Any additional comments? So I think we're ready to move to the next agenda item, which is discussion of other agenda items. Mr. Aker, is there anything you or your staff wish to share with council or suggest?
Not at this time.
How about members of council?
I have two questions for Mr. Aker. First of all, can you tell me the status of the intermodal center? Has it been in progress on appraisals or moving forward with that since we last spoke?
I don't think we've moved forward. We did have some in entertainment, I don't, Mr. Feinberg has had some initial discussion that may be an optional consideration, but I'll have to get an update.
I appreciate an update, and also code issues relative to our downtown buildings. When will we be revisiting that again?
I hope to revisit that the first work session in September. I've had discussions with Mr. Kelly. He's had some, what do you call them, revelations on some ideas and thoughts that will make those some improvements. In fact, he and I, and Mr. Feinberg, discussed that in like the recent inspection that we did at the Opera House on how having those in place will give us yet another tool to hopefully do things on.
Okay, just wanted to make sure they can get that further than they want.
And just a follow-up to Ms. Fulton's question. I remember some talk about the Dola grant for the intermodal facility. Perhaps having some expiration?
It may have been, I think it's more of the, I think it's C dot, it's not...
Well, C dot, I'm sure.
And we'll give an update. I think we passed, I think we're not to that hurdle. I think we're fine with all that. But I'll have Mr. Feinberg provide us some additional information, including with your pack.
Oh, and if I may, one additional question. In our information sheet that we get in our packet?
Yes.
Typically, we would get a monthly report on coding protections, and we haven't gotten it the last few months.
I will find out where that's at.
Thank you.
Any other suggestions, comments, input? And seeing that, we have concluded the business scheduled for the special work session. Thank you all for bearing with us, and we are now off the record. Good evening.